Well, because we're on a clock, there's a timeframe on how long we have for that park. Um, and, and so simply what we're doing is bringing forth ideas to do a memorial park, which is the same renderings that they did for us in 2016. It should be in everybody's packet. And what we, why this is on the agenda, we wanted to go through this to make sure this is still, um, you know, we, we still are in agreeance of moving forward with this process that's identified for us. The historical marker that Councilman Jones talked about, which then we need to give, give approval to pay the thirty-five dollar application fee, and then find out JJ where, which fund that will come from. And then, so then there's another thing that many people may talk about. The first part of the process was the remediation plan. TCEQ was called on the City of Prairie View. There was, uh, I don't know if it's the city or Economic 4B, both together moved forth with whatever TCEQ brought a case. Remediation was paid for, uh, through Economic 4B dollars. We have a report. The K, I talked to the engineer, the case will close. What, right now, they, uh, the, the conversation between the engineer and TCEQ is that they're gonna close our case in Ju-, uh, July one. And then the engineering firm is gonna give us a report in July on next steps. He says the case is pretty much is gonna be closed, but there are two things we're gonna need to do. We're gonna need to cap the wells. He says to cap the wells maximum of two, I don't know if it's cap in a well, he said cap. So whatever his team needs to do is gonna cost twenty-five hundred dollars. He says the max is three thousand dollars in his report that he's gonna give to TCEQ. And so that gets us moving on our next phase of the process. So there's the rem- remediation from TCEQ. There's the, the project design from the School of Architecture. And then there's, which is the Sandra Bland Park Memorial, which is not a, just a park for Sandra Bland. It's not just for her. Then you have the historic designation or plaque that Councilman Jones is wanting to add in, not where the current situation where Mc-Sandra Bland's bears are and banners are, but in this park is where we're gonna erect the historical marker. And so we, we just wanna make sure, the goal is to communicate all these actions. This has been something that's been sitting on the City of Prairie View's shoulders for some time. And it's now our time to move it. We have it on the agenda, and we're just here to update you on what we're currently doing. It, this is nothing about renaming a street or any, anything with the street, but it has to do with the park, has to do with the historical markers, but it also has to do with making sure that we have closed out the case to TC's, TCEQ. Um, so the next steps is for council, well, what is to find out if we have any money JJ, to pay the thirty-five dollar.
I'll donate the thirty-five dollars.
And then, um, we have, we'll need to pay the engineering firm once they give us this report in January, which is, I mean, so, excuse me, July. Um, it's, he says it should be no more, maximum thirty, uh, twenty-five hundred to three thousand. We wouldn't do that now. Well, we would have, we would get it and then give it to Economic 4B to see if they would pay for that. Because the park is who.
The, the park is under Economic 4B.
Right.
Because the city, the city can't, can't use the park. So when it was, when it was claimed in the eminent domain, we went to Economic 4B for Economic 4B to use it to.
Okay, so, so how, how do we, the, the goal is, how do we then move the next steps? The, that process for TCEQ is already working. The report should come in ju- by July one. But we need to have a plan of action because we have a timeframe on the eminent domain, um, which is why we, why this is on the agenda to talk about either whether we're gonna go with this proposal, because there's also another conversation, um, and that is the conversation about the Prairie View A and M University stepping up to the plate and, and, and having a conversation about entering what is a, as a MOU to find out if they would help to pay for some of the additional costs that may come. And this is just conversation, but we do need to designate or, you know, get the ball moving on that.
So today, who are we talking about, the thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five dollars application.
I know it's been donated.
Okay. So, so then what, what needs to come, what, what other things we need? We need to say, so if they, if the university or some donor like the mayor, the mayor just donated thirty-five dollars, maybe he might write a forty thousand dollar check. Say if he wants to donate, we need to know what is he, what are we going to put in this park? So we also need to know specifically, what, we, we have this drawings and, and, so we need to figure out, are we set with this? Are we gonna continue to bring this, are, are we gonna continue to?
I think we need to, it's been a couple years since the presentation has been made. I think we need to invite the, ask the College of Agriculture back.
Read the presentation.
And, and I think based on the, uh, community input last time, that we need to have a workshop on this. Because a town hall workshop so that residents can come and give their input and feedback because that's what was, uh, the issue last time.
Yeah, I, so, so we wanna be clear, well, this is the will of, of the community. We wanna get input, but I also want us to understand that there's a, there's a timeframe. And the timeframe of the park, which we got the park, um, will run out. So, so what we're saying is outside of the town hall meeting, because there's some, so we're saying that if the, if we wanna enter an MOU or even have a discussion on paying for, who's gonna pay for the park? We need to, first, the, the community needs to, needs to say if we wanna go with the, the plan that was presented in 2016, so we may need to do an update. So that's a town hall meeting. But then we also need, uh, an amount. A cost, a cost, there's a cost associated of what we're gonna do.
Right, there's steps though, we, we got to identify that, we have to go through that step before we can identify the cost. I think we can't even go through that step until after you, we get the report back from TCEQ in July one.
And, and I think we need to double check with legal counsel because it's my understanding, the timeframe that, uh, you're speaking of Councilman Rowan, was I believe a ten-year period. The remediation, when the city took action to demolish the building, was one act that at least prior council has shared, extended it. We just completed the remediation of underground soil and testing it. If that holds true with my prior conversation with T, TCEQ and council, that extended it. So we're talking years. While, while it may come, I just don't want the public to again feel like they're being rushed into something when we may or may not have that rush and we'll have council confirm that.
Yep, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree with you, uh, but we're, we're looking at a plan from 2016. So it wasn't planned from yesterday. And so the goal is for us to have a town hall meeting to get community input so the community can see the plan that has been presented and make any current changes to how we feel in 2019, so.
So, so why don't you contact the College of Agri- of Architecture and see when they can come and give the presentation at a town hall meeting, that'll be the next step. So do we need, we don't need any action on this item because the thirty-five dollars was donated by some junk? You good?
Yes, I'm good.
I think you need to, um, have a motion on going forward and then, um, sign the paperwork and write the check.
I move that we accept the, the submission of, of historical landmark for Sandra Bland.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that council accept the submission of the historical landmark for Sandra Bland. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
I'm ready, Councilman.
I guess my question before Attorney Zach, Attorney Zach?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Oh, so if, if the, the landmark is something that's already been approved back in 2014, do we, do we, this motion that we have on the floor already, is it, is it necessary?
Was, was it, I, I don't know, did they, did you approve a landmark generally? And now this is a specific, a specific?
I'm just making, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
All right, never mind, call for the question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? Aye, say aye. The, the re. Number, item ten, discussion updating possible action on city engineer service, Councilman Jones.
Uh, I think that, I think that council had wanted to, uh, talk about the direction in which we was gonna move forward. Uh, then I guess get a, well, we had already got an update, but just if you would like to inform the city, uh, along the pro- process, just as you have been working expeditiously to get us a city secretary, um, you also have been working, uh, on getting us a city engineer. So just tell them, I guess, the update and what you told us.
Okay, um, we've been using a combination of Trilogy Engineering Services, as you heard earlier, and LJA Engineering Services. And what has happened as a result of the manner in which we've been doing it, all the work they've been doing was a pass-through and paid for by respective developers, not the city. What we're looking at possibly undertaking now is, there are a lot of things in between projects that, as, as Attorney Zach said, with reviewing the resolution. So I spoke with, uh, one of those engineering firms earlier, and we're looking at getting together soon to see if we can come up with, and council, I don't know if it might be a retainer or, or something to help with the individual, uh, situation so we could use them. But we also have to check with, uh, Mr. Johnson because we don't have any money in the budget for an engineer. While we've been saying we need one, we can't pay for one. So, uh, that conversation's been kinda difficult. Um, that's why we've been using them on a project-by-project basis because we didn't have the money budgeted for them. So, uh, Mr. Johnson, if you could take a look at that, and again, we're coming up in the budget cycle, might be better, better time and opportunity just to, to throw that out there. But not a lot we can do tonight because we have no money on that, Councilman Rowan.
So, I, 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 maybe I missed all this. So first of all, the city, meaning we cannot write a check, we're not a pass-through without coming back to, before council. That's the first thing. You can't go to whatever company you choose, and that's part of our conversation. We, we do know that you diligently been working to move the city forward, and, and so my indictment is, is not as it sounds like you're doing what you want. I just wanna be very clear.
On?
On.
What do you wanna be clear on?
Um, the city engineer is something we haven't had for about nine months.
No, it's been.
And right.
Not longer.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
About a year, but, but please don't interrupt me again when I have the floor. All right, so it's been about twelve months. And so my issue, the concern is for any project that moves in the City of Prairie View, whether we have the money or not, a civil engineer must, needs to look at the plans both for water, sewer, and drainage. And so whereas I don't, I guess you think I am saying something negative to you, and I'm not, I am saying we have an issue and the part of why it's on the agenda is because we have to come up with a solution. And the solution is not saying we need to find money, because this is what we've been doing. What I am saying in the conversation with all the large developments that have happened, I wanna know specifically, well, not, not I wanna know, that, because we're talking about the engineer. The, 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 the point is what engineering firm specifically have looked at those developments to do the water, sewer, and drainage? And so when you say it's a pass-through, if a company says they need to do, if they need to sign off on engineering plans, they pay a fee to the City of Prairie View. The City of Prairie View collects that in their account. You can't say we are pass-through and then you go write the check to any company you want. You come back to city council and says, and, and we're saying we're using, let's say, LJA Engineering. You've done it three times, I don't know why you haven't done it the other times. You say we wanna use LJA Engineering on this project. City council says, okay, no problem, we're gonna pay him this amount of money out of this account. And I'm not understanding why for the other twenty-five applications, you haven't done the same projects. And that number is not a definite number, but we know it's at least twenty-five. And so my, my, my concern, and I think council, because we continue to put this on the agenda, is we wanna know who is currently doing the engineering, and it's not a must, it's, it's not a, 'cause we don't have enough money, we don't do it. There, a project shouldn't move forward unless there is water, sewer, and drainage assessment done, signed off by civil engineer. And if you can sit up here and says that that has happened on the behalf of the City of Prairie View, then I stand corrected.
That has happened.
Can I see the documentation for each project?
We can get it for you, all them rolls of paper out there. The, the, the fact that we've been using Trilogy and LJA is not at all new to you, council, and you act like you're hearing those names for the first time. You even called one of them out, Trilogy Engineering, earlier. When I say they're pass-through, I'm simply saying the city's not paying for it, and some of those bills were paid directly by them, and there was nothing to bring back to council because if you're following the process, then the process is those plans get reviewed. You, you were here when it was set up, I don't understand this.
That's why I'm, I'm saying.
Well, hold up, don't interrupt me.
Okay, I thought you just wanted a explanation.
Hold on, nope, I don't need one. Okay, Bureau Veritas inspects and gets two sets of plans when someone comes in and pays. One set goes to a civil. It has either been LJA or Trilogy, and whatever those costs were, were borne and paid by the respective development. We're sounding as though we have not had engineers look at any of these projects, according to you. And all of them are signed off, all the rolls of plans are upfront, a few of them are in my office, and they're wide open for you and anyone to, to see at any given time. That's not what I do, but our process is to pull it in, and when the zoning is appropriate for what they wanna build there, the zoning has already been before planning zoning and city council, and we go forward. So, go ahead, Councilman Randall.
Um, I think it's important to talk apples when we're talking apples. Um, this item says discuss, update, and possible action on a city engineer, and I think we've kind of gotten off of that. And so, um, the response was why we hadn't had a city engineer was because we didn't have the money to, to pay for one. So I guess my question for JJ is how have we paid for a city engineer in the past? Because up until the last twelve months, the city has had an engineer?
Okay, the difference is the city has had contract engineers. And the only engineering cost that you have incurred are engineering costs when there is a, a contract and it's, it's part of the contract cost.
You made a project.
Right.
So that they can follow.
It's part of the project cost.
So, same thing we're doing now?
Right, the inspection is where you incur the, uh, the overseeing that the project is taking away like it's supposed to.
And so, that's not something that can be changed until we, we dive into the budget as far as hiring a, a city engineer who's going to be paid salary and, and, you know, monthly, whatever. But I guess the question is, we've been using the two entities Trilogy and LJA, why haven't, why haven't we, why can't we bring them to be our, you know, 'cause we're using two separate ones right now. Why can't we look at one and bring one to be our city engineer that we hired to projects that we don't, since we don't pay for them anyway, why does it?
You can do that.
Why does it necessarily matter who the?
Well, there, there's some things that now with all the activity, there, there's those, just like what council said earlier, when we look at having an engineer incorporate those things, how does that person get paid? Because now the city is the project, so we're the ones that have to pay for their time. So it's, it's those types of things. Uh, the street project that we're talking about, where we may need an engineering firm to take a look at beyond what our public works guys do, 'cause they, I mean, they fill potholes, but they can't, you know, project and things like that. So it's, it's those additional things that we're needing now that we're talking about.
So just because those funds come out of, I mean, go to an engineer, those funds don't necessarily come out of an engineering budget item, JJ?
Right.
So.
That, that the city has to pay, that, that's your engineering budget. That, that is borne by, by the project itself, has always been a part of the project cost.
Right.
So that's the difference. Now, all you guys are saying now is that if you have some other activity that's gonna, that the city's gonna incur engineering costs, and that just increases your budget for the engineer.
Right, and so I guess my question is, when we look at our budget for, like today, we don't have a, a quote-unquote budget for the, for the city engineer, but there are things within the city that we would like to do that require an engineer, like we talked about the, the, the road thing, creating the. So, we have, we have a, a budget that's used for road maintenance. Could definitely, the funds come out of road maintenance to hire a, an engineer to give a road maintenance report. Like, so my, what I'm going with is there are, if there, if we're using the engineer to fulfill other spectrums that could be covered under other items of the budget, do those things exist and is that a possibility?
Mr. Rand?
Yes, Councilman Rowan?
So, so just so I'm clear. Where, where you were, y'all were talking about other projects. I'm talking about the main projects that a developer comes in and pays money to the City of Prairie View. That money comes to the City of Prairie View. And then when we had Line Decker or anyone else before, we would take his money out of the, the project and pay him, but we had one individual. Right now, council did not approve an engineering firm, correct? The mayor used.
No, that's not correct.
The mayor used a temporary appointment and appointed Trilogy Engineering who, who looked at the cricket field. And then he had used them for subsequent other things. Mr. Mayor, we're saying that per project, since we don't have an engineer designated, per project, you should have come back to city council to use the money because we do not have a current, uh, person designated to use that money now for that project. We would have then now said, LJ Engineering, your project, your scope of work for this project is ten thousand dollars, and we need to write them a check because we received the money when they came in and gave us the plans. And so I'm not saying that, and, and, I'm not saying that, um, I, I'm saying we just need to be, be, be mindful of how we're communicating our process, and that hasn't happened, meaning you have not come back before us and says project A or B, we got fifty thousand dollar check. And out that fifty thousand dollar check, ten thousand dollars is for engineering.
Let me, uh, and I just wanna follow you. That fifty thousand came from where and for what?
Came for the developers and they gave the, the fee. So in our fees, we have a fee schedule, and it tells them how much it, it costs for plans, drawings, site work. Now, we, that is broken down and it goes to different parks, so part of it may go to Bureau Veritas?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm with you now. The entire check minus the fifteen percent admin is totally calculated and sent to Bureau Veritas. We receive not one dime upfront from a developer for engineering fees that we have no idea what they may be yet.
So when Mr. Line Decker.
I'm, I'm sorry.
When Mr. Line Decker was here, a month, a year ago.
Okay.
When we paid for his fees, where did they come from? They didn't come out the City of Prairie View's budget? And so I'm saying we are not charging the company for the, for the fee.
Hold on, I never wrote Mr. Line Decker a check for a dime. So I have no idea what money you're talking about. Mr. Line Decker was not included in the Bureau Veritas inspection process. That system and computation is totally from the Bureau Veritas process that you and others had in place when I came in. We made sure we added the fifteen percent admin, but other than that, nothing goes to anybody but Bureau Veritas. It's their inspection fee, and the inspection fee in their system is calculated based on the to- total cost of the project or appraisal of the project, whatever the figure is. But they write the value, I'm sorry, on the application, the permit, it says value. Based on that value, the ladies up front intern in Bureau Veritas's computer program, and it tells us how much to charge for the inspections of that value of a project. All of that money is Bureau Veritas, except for the fifteen percent add-on. Councilman Randall?
So I'm just, I guess, I'm, um, either way, I just need some clarification of what we're talking about on this item, 'cause.
Engineer.
This, I mean, we're talking about a lot of things to, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if this, I don't applause that's what this item is talking about.
So the, the item is discuss, discussion, update, and possible action on city engineering services. And I, my conversation is, do we have a fee schedule for what an engineering would charge for developers who are, who needs to have a wastewater sewer line or drainage reporter assessment? And so now you said, you said that you didn't pay Line Decker.
Or, or any other engineer. We haven't paid him a dime except a direct product cost that was borne by the developer. And until the engineer did the work, they weren't clear what the total fee would be. But when the bill came, those folks paid it, not us.
So, once again, we're having a lot of discussion that's not really leading towards a direction. So I'm trying, I'm trying to facilitate how we get to a, get to a conclusion because right now it's just a whole lot of conversation.
Yeah, and, and I think the biggest thing is just understanding the process. The engineer is over there, and let's say Councilman Randall's a developer. He submits the paperwork for a hundred dollar project. The computer calculates, he's supposed to pay, say, five dollars for Bureau Veritas to inspect them, and we add on fifteen percent or, I mean, that's not even a dollar. But the rest of it goes to Bureau Veritas because their inspectors are the ones totally inspecting his project. They're the independent operation on behalf of the city and a lot of cities that take care of this because we don't have those licensing people on board. But nothing goes to that engineer until, again, on his project, we need to send someone out on behalf of the city to take a look at it. So we contract with Councilman Wallace's engineering firm, and they go out and say it's gonna cost, you know, they, ten dollars based on what they needed to do for his civil plans. He pays it. And he gets his money, so he's fine. He inspected it, so the city's fine, but there's no extra money for.
The money went, so I guess, in, in the attorney Zach.
Yes.
So, and JJ, you're saying that the money did not go to, was it checked? You're saying the check was written to Bureau Veritas or the check was written to Line Decker directly, and no check was cut through the City of Prairie View?
The Bureau Veritas process that you voted to set up, the check is written to the City of Prairie View.
Correct.
We retain our fifteen percent and we send them every dime beyond that. So that check is written to the city for those inspection services.
So, so point of order, once again, we're talking about a process. Councilman Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, but this item was designed to, we can talk about how close you are to hiring a city engineer. We're, and Mr. Mayor, if you tell us that you aren't closer to hiring a city engineer?
Just real briefly, I'm sorry, council member. Um, the city engineer, it was my understanding, I think Councilmember Rowan touched on it, 'cause I'm the one that said y'all need to get a city engineer nine months ago or ten months ago or wherever it was. And that's because we, y'all had not yet appointed a specific engineering company as your city engineer. I brought to city council a request for qualifications in November of last year that all of y'all approved, that was supposed to go out to then get responses for an engineering firm to serve as your city engineer. That city engineer's role, under your codes, as I understand them, would do several things. One would, would be, and, and they'll give you a fee schedule that says this is how much we charge you for X, Y, or Z, for example, reviewing the, the land disturbance ordinance. And, and you would know how much that would cost when you asked them to review it, and they'd send you a bill. The other things that they have to do is, for example, and no one's mentioned it yet, when someone wants to plat property, a plat has to be supplied, and it takes a city engineer to review that plat. I'm assuming, based on the conversation I'm hearing. I'm assuming, based on the conversation I'm hearing, that that is a direct pass-through cost. In other words, the city, the city engineer, engineering firm would say, it's gonna cost
Right.
twenty-five hundred dollars to review this plat to ensure it's in compliance with all your rules and orga- and regulations. And the developer sh- it either cuts the check directly to the engineering company for that, or, or it cuts a check to the city and the city then passes that through.
Right.
Which is where there's no cost associated with that.
Right.
There are certain costs associated with using an engineer that are different from the plat review. We need a company properly processed and vetted to be named your city engineer.
Right, right.
I've been asking that since November of last year.
Right.
That's where we're at right now.
And that's not what we're talking about.
Okay, that's, 'cause that's what's on the agenda.
That's not what we're talking about.
That's what's on the agenda.
Everything but that. So the question is, we were, we were, we were given a, a, what was it called?
A request for qualification.
Qualification. Has the request for qualification been, been sent out, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it's posted on the city's website.
And so, um, how long has it been out?
Months.
When is it, when is the position closed?
It should have been closed. It closed like, I think, the twenty-fourth of May.
I thought it was posted for like seven days.
Yep.
So-
But that was the hiring, and let me, let me say this, because all of you are correct, except as the attorney said. Not one of you said, how are we gonna pay for him? We had a thousand dollars in the engineer budget. It just got raised to ten thousand.
Your, your whole argument is that we don't have to pay for him, he pays for himself. We need, what we're saying is, we need a city engineer that we're going, one city engineer that we're gonna call whenever, whenever anybody come to develop. We're gonna pick up, like, for the last how many years, whenever anybody came to do development, we picked up the phone and we called Line Decker. And the city was still the exact same pass-through, but we knew every time that anybody came to develop, we called Line Decker. So what we're saying is, we need a person, an entity, some, one, something, that's going to be the person that we call anytime that somebody's gonna develop. And that's, and they're gonna be a person who, who inspects facilities on the behalf of the city, and they get paid still through the development. Now, in the event that the city needs the engineer to do other things, that's when we have to look into our budget and figure out if the money is there. And if it's not there, we either can't do it, or like I mentioned with, um, with like the roads, it may be able to come out of a different line item, but it doesn't have to come out of city engineer line items. So, I think this conversation is very far spent. So, I don't think we're in. So I guess the question is, so since the position is closed, application should have either started being reviewed or, or should be- So the selection process should be beginning?
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
We haven't received one application.
We didn't, so LJA or Trilogy didn't apply, uh, didn't apply to be a city engineer?